Please don't forget to like and subscribe to our YouTube channel at www.fourtyninthcounty.com.
Go ahead and get started. Kevin, if you don't hear, you don't have to listen.
Lord, we thank you Father for this day. We thank you for the lessons of life you've given us, Lord, and thank you for our health and means and freedoms that we get to come and do these things. We thank you for the kind of republic or the kind of government that we have, Lord, that's governed by the people and that we can come and represent the people, Lord, and help us to do a good job if they had it. Lord, just help us be the people you have us to be, may we honor you, and I always say and do, and help us to look to you for leadership and guidance in every decision we make. And Lord, I pray then that you just forgive us when we sin, when we do mess up, Lord, and help us to get back on the right track and be the men and women you have us to be in Christ's name, I pray. Amen?
Amen. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Need a motion to call the meeting to order?
Motion?
Darren, second. Kevin?
Second. All in favor?
Item number two, need a motion and a second to cover all what's on the agenda. Eugene, second. Kevin? Everybody? Item number three, reading of the minutes. Carla, if you don't mind?
The Hackleburg Town Council met in regular session on April eighth, two thousand nineteen at six p.m. Mayor Coburn asked for a motion to call the meeting to order. A motion was made by Councilmember Lawley and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Morrell to call the meeting to order. Don Morrell led everyone in prayer, then the pledge was said by all. The attendance is listed below. Mayor Coburn stated that the meeting was open for the transaction of business. A motion was made by Councilmember Wigginton and seconded by Councilmember Marbit to cover all of the items on the agenda. Voting was as follows: all As, no Nays. The mayor asked the clerk to read the minutes from the March eleventh, two thousand nineteen meeting. After reading, a motion was made by Councilmember Lawley and seconded by Councilmember Don Morrell to accept as presented. Voting was as follows: As, Darrell Coburn, Don Morrell, Tabby Lawley, Darren Wigginton, abstained, Kevin Morrell, and Eugene Marbit. The mayor asked the clerk to read the minutes from the March twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen meeting. After reading, a motion was made by Councilmember Kevin Morrell and seconded by Councilmember Marbit to accept as presented. Voting was as follows: As, Darrell Coburn, Don Morrell, Kevin Morrell, Eugene Marbit, abstained, Tabby Lawley, Darren Wigginton. The clerk presented the mayor and council with a financial statement to review. After reviewing, a motion was made by Councilmember Wigginton and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Morrell to accept as presented. Voting was as follows: all As, no Nays. The clerk presented the mayor and council with a check register for them to approve. After reviewing, a motion was made by Councilmember Lawley and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Morrell to pay all bills when due. Voting was as follows: all As, no Nays. In old business, Councilmember Kevin Morrell asked for an update on the Denson building. For town attorney, Tony Glenn, Mr. Denson had picked up his letter at the post office. He is still within his thirty-day range for repairs. Also in old business, Chief Marbit had asked to attend a conference in Auburn on May twenty-first through twenty-second, and also had requested to attend the chief's conference in Orange Beach in July. Councilmember Wigginton made a motion and was seconded by Councilmember Lawley to allow Chief Marbit to attend these classes. Voting was as follows: all As excepting Eugene Marbit abstained. The mayor wanted to discuss maintenance options for the safety shelters that were first brought up at the last meeting. Councilmember Lawley felt that the street department employees should do the maintenance on the shelters as did some others. Councilmember Don Morrell felt like we should take, we should look at a bid from the builder of the shelters. A motion was made by Councilmember Marbit and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Morrell to have the town employees pressure wash the shelters, then push back the dirt from, from them and take beds on what else was needed. Voting was as follows: all As excepting Don Morrell, nay. The last piece of old business was to check on the status of the open water box at Dub Jackson's property. Per Don Morrell, there are two other areas like this. A motion was made by Councilmember Marbit and seconded by Councilmember Wigginton to have Councilmember Don Morrell look at this and get prices to repair, but do not go over five hundred dollars. Voting was as follows: all As, no Nays. In new business, the mayor and council wanted to discuss painting lines in the ballpark parking lot. Parking at Field Three is very bad. We need to get lines painted for a solution to the problem. After a discussion, it was decided that we need to mark off a few handicap parks at the front of the lot, then mark off a lane for no parking or an emergency exit. We should also, excuse me, we should also order some handicap signs. A motion was made by Councilmember Lawley and seconded by Councilmember Wigginton to try this solution. Voting was as follows: all As, no Nays. The mayor wanted to remind all employees and council members that they will have to attend and work every day. The mayor and council discussed every day. Everything is coming together and we need to get advertising out on Facebook and on the radio. The senior building was discussed. There are several repairs that need to be made. The exit lots are out and the ladies bathroom needs to be checked. The gravel and grade list was discussed. The name on the lists are Wadi Cochran and Shanna and Carrie Cochran. A motion was made by Don Morrell and seconded by Kevin Morrell to gravel and grade said drives. Voting was as follows: all As, no Nays. There being no further business to come before the council, a motion was made by Councilmember Marbit and seconded by Councilmember Kevin Morrell to adjourn.
Thank you, Carla. Any comments or questions on the minutes?
Have you put out the storm cellar? Done anything on that? We're gonna wait till over day though?
Yeah, I mean, we can't start it right now. We have the backhoes down, so we can't take the dirt out. But we, we, we need to decide what we're gonna do.
What about the, uh, the manhole covers? Is that what that?
Those are gonna be, now, one of them is by the park, but these others are gonna be the water park. One by Dub and one at the pool.
What about painting the parking lot? Tabby was supposed to be doing that, wasn't she?
Yeah, which, you know, we've decided to paint a lane to get in and out of it. Cause it's always strapped to the whole parking lot.
The three hand.
Yeah, do some handicap parking.
But on the storm cellar, well, when you get the backhoe done, we are gonna go ahead and probably need to dig it out and then pressure wash it.
Yeah, we have to. Then, I mean, we can't do anything.
So pressure wash and then dig it out.
Need a motion to accept the minutes?
Motion?
Darren? Second? Eugene?
All in favor?
Uh, everybody? All the business, all new business, uh, item number one, discuss the backhoe. Y'all will remember last year, was it last summer, Chad?
Yeah, it was sort of before I went to work.
The, uh, gears on one side of the front wheel walked up. We had to have them replaced and, uh, I think we were out five or six thousand on that. And at the time, they told us the other side would eventually do the same thing, and it has. So, we're looking at, A, they're having that work done. According to the city guys, the hydraulic pump is probably about to go out on it, which we're talking probably another two or three thousand. So we, we need to discuss, is it time to look at purchasing a better backhoe or continue to patch this backhoe and keep putting money into it? Chad came tonight. If y'all have any questions about the backhoe or the cost or...
How old is it, Chad, or how many hours? We've had a long time.
It's probably got well over twenty thousand pairs on it. The air major don't even work up more than, I think it's between sixteen thousand. But, uh, I mean, it's got several issues. Uh, out of every cylinder on the big tree pack, the valve body's just leaking hydraulic oil like crazy. Like you mentioned, the hydraulic pump's making an awful noise right now, so that's gonna be the next issue, but, uh, it's, it's worn out.
Kevin, if I am mistaken, we got that backhoe after the quarantine?
Yes, y'all did.
I wouldn't say they bought it from a plumber, which is, is still in the plumbing business, so, you know, if you sell your equipment that you make money off of, but you keep doing that work, you're probably ready to get rid of that equipment. And it, it's been a fairly good backhoe for the time we've had it, but the last two years, we've put serious money into it.
It, it's like a token. You keep it, but I mean, you just don't have to keep that money. I mean, you pay for another backhoe and stuff and what you save in maintenance and have it for oil, or that one left and right.
Is it four-wheel drive?
Yeah.
Without what's out?
Well, it won't, it won't work in two or four-wheel drive either one of them.
No, it's locked up. At times it'll free up and roll a little bit when it's locked back down. We had it out working on the road in Patheus County, all the way to ours, and we couldn't even get it back to the shop.
Do y'all typically buy new or look for good use?
Good, good used one, and we have a gentleman in Dartmouth Town, Andy Lane, you know him? He handle, really honest guy. He, he's got some good used backhoes that, um, he's got a two thousand ten John Deere, um, four-wheel drive with cab. He's got the extender hold. He's got the power thumb, four-in-one bucket. And when you really have a strong boat, the way they built this, both pumps will kick in. So instead of just using the front-end hydraulic pump, if it needed help, the rear one would kick in and help it out. It's got every bell and whistle you could want on it.
The damage from something like that?
He, he's asking thirty-nine. The, the little Massey we have out here, he's offered us like ten or eleven on a trade, which would bring it down automatically to twenty-eight, twenty-nine. And then he said he would look at our backhoe and consider taking it.
Taking it on freight?
Which would bring it on down.
How many hours is on that?
Twenty-nine hundred for us practically.
That other little Massey you're not using yet or don't use much, or this one can cover both? This one can do whatever needs done?
What we do with that is great driveways, which you can do with a front-end loader. That, that would be the only trade-off we'd really lose. That's all we use it for.
Can you not hook the blade of that big tractor?
You could, like, if you were gonna just do driveways for a week or two, but to change that bush hog out every time you needed it and hook the grader box up, that, that would be a lot of trouble. But then we, we.
But you have to do it at home. What's, what's different to maintain that home, Kevin? There's got foot attacks in there, isn't there? And we don't run them both at one time, no way. I haven't seen them run. I haven't seen but one of them driving, but anyway.
Well, we've just now started.
That would be the guy that's here, but nevertheless, I guess that's a different story.
We've just now started bush hogging, but, yeah, we run them both at the same time all summer.
I don't think it'd be a problem myself putting that blade on with them tractors, cause they ain't gonna be running twenty-four seven, no way. We need to trade the other one in, but...
Well, I mean, Chad can tell you, hey, that is a good bit of trouble changing them out, but if we knew we were gonna be using it a couple of weeks, you know, to work driveways, we, we could do it, but, um, anyway, but, uh, that's mainly what we use that little tractor for.
The baby side too, is so we use the backhoe to load the gravel with. So then, well, we got a lot of gravel and driveways to work on. We can only work about half a day. And then we gotta take the backhoe and go and spread all that gravel. If it's somewhere where I can't get it out.
Yeah, you can't, you can't use a backhoe on the driveway. That's, that's a no. That ain't happening. I know, the county commissioner tried that. That ain't gonna work. That ain't gonna happen, period.
And the blade we have now is a good leveling blade, you know, and, yeah. I mean, we, we can make it work, but, you know.
What do you think about the backhoe? You hear the mechanic give the hydraulic?
I said, if it was mine personally, it'd be gone.
I'm talking about the one he was talking about. Do you think that's sufficient? They chop around or, I don't know.
I haven't looked at it, but I can tell you the walk one like that, it cost you a few because the county just popped on last year and it was over a hundred grand, so.
Really?
With all the nails and whistles like that, it hurts at the four ten and that was a pretty can, is that correct? Which is the same size.
Yes, a three-ten S J, which is top of the line.
That'll handle, that size will handle anything we do?
Yeah.
Comfortably?
Four-wheel drive.
I, I don't know a thing about backhoes for John Deere or Ford or...
I mean, I, I said that John Deere out there, it's got plenty of power to do what we do.
Cause they got the air on. You just had to get up with the heat in there. Tony, could we do that? Being, how normal, we'd have to put our stuff on, bet it off on a state website, like we getting rid of something. Could we, would we be legal to trade that Massey in on that?
Yeah, I think so. I don't think there's any question.
We got to, what, we take the money out of the road to base of that?
I think we gotta come out of the general fund.
Is the road one, I mean, could you use it to purchase equipment for road maintenance? Cause I mean, the backhoe's usually.
That's true, for paving or?
You gotta use it for road work. It's gotta be for paving or patching or bridge work.
We could use it for that.
Or, I mean, we, we can take a loan now if we, you know, come down to it.
Got a lot in occupational money right now that has not been transferred.
We have the money, we can pay for it?
No, we gotta wait. We'll figure something we got.
Well, we're in pretty good shape, let me say that. We get in a lot worse shape.
Trade it in, you'd, you'd be down in the twenty, twenty-something thousand dollar range.
And if he took the old backhoe? If they'd given us a fair price, I mean, if it's like you say, if it won't move, you ain't gonna get nothing out of it, no way.
Exactly.
It's crap.
As I say, we got a bunch of gravel out now, no way to do it, so.
And he'll understand what he needs to do, you know, to repair that one, so, um...
And like I told him, you can spend the money to fix it and then try and sell it, but you probably ain't gonna get no more out of it than what you put in to get paid for.
We'll end up being upset, man.
I mean, you're talking four or five grand, but...
You know, we, we don't wanna do this. We didn't wanna have to buy a new mower, we, you know, but.
There we go, that's.
That's right. Right now, we're behind on brush picking up, behind on all the gravel.
You say that have a foam on it?
Yeah, power foam.
So you just grab that and throw your brush in the truck?
Or with the front-end loader, it's got like the.
Grapple thing on it?
It ain't a grapple. It's like a park and closes.
Oh. Trash compactor, really.
Save y'all a lot of work, huh? It'd be easier to pick up bigger, bigger stuff. It'd be easy, yeah. Make it a lot easier.
And like if you're, uh, a lot of times it's rip rap. We waste a lot because we dump it. We have the backhoe, we could couple of rocks at a time, place them where we need them, rather than just dumping them. And, you know, we don't have to make a decision tonight. Heat's gonna come up tomorrow and we'll get a price and know right where we're at.
So, so what are you giving? I'd get, I'd, I'd get rid of that one, too. If he'd give me any flat fine for me, I, I ain't one and a half chunks that night. I'm getting rid of it.
We should've done it last year, really, probably. Just we, we didn't.
What'd he say, one thirty-eight?
He was asking thirty-nine.
And he's, well, what, twelve with the tractor?
Uh, he's, last year when he was offering eleven, so.
And plus the backhoe, can give us anything.
What do you think, Darren?
I think we probably needed it last year.
Yeah, we did.
If he gives a little retract, it'd be twenty-nine and five. It's a, I guess, I don't know, if he gives us five, I'd get it down to what, twenty-five thousand? Again, I don't think it'd be worth it.
I don't know what we'd be paying on the backhoe, do you, Chad? Any idea?
Not in my condition, I think, no. I mean, I'd probably like you to forgive him, find him, I mean, he probably.
Yeah, I just shoot him from hell. That's hydraulic somewhere and stuff. Basically, that's just scrapping it down, but I don't know.
It's like, he might fix it himself, but he's got time to set on it.
Right. And they probably got four or six, but he's took off all of them.
And it ain't, it ain't so much the labor didn't kill us last time, but the parts, what, what's the, the cheapest one he found?
Cheapest one he's found is thirty, thirty-three or thirty-six hundred, and that's used.
Used, and we don't know what kind of shape it's in. For a new one, it's what, fifty-four?
Yeah, it's like fifty-six hundred dollars.
So, you know, it's still the time. You, you gotta quit putting money out there.
That one, but we're laboring, so, I mean, I think the last guy charged, what, what, y'all said, three hundred dollars?
Yeah.
But we can't get him to work on that.
He's out of town.
He'll come up tomorrow and look at it and we'll do some real numbers.
While you have from that meeting, maybe, but we're going to have it.
Yeah, we, absolutely.
Yeah, they can hit it as quick as possible when it comes out, all right?
We can take it till next meeting.
I would put, get prices from, um,
What was it, Andy?
Andy Lane.
Yeah, see what Andy Lane was all struggling for the Massey in the backhoe. I would help y'all tremendously, cause I know you've got to do a lot of that by hand, that small stuff. You could just reach and grab it. And actually, that'd beat you from buying a truck with a boom pole on it. That was my idea when we come to office, but that's pretty softy too, but, if you have a, we don't remember having another one, but, worth the money if you need them.
Baker guy uses?
Yeah, I had it, it's just like.
Got a crawl on it?
Yeah, it's just like you used a little lumber, or not lumber, but log. All right. I don't guess we had a motion on that, did we? We tabled it to get the price.
Yeah, go ahead and do one to table it.
Need a motion to table the discussion to the next meeting and come out with a price on it. Second? Eugene and Kevin? Everybody? Okay. All right. Item number two, post lifeguard jobs. It's always kinda sneaks up on us and, we're a little bit out in front of it this time, but, normally, we, uh, post a position for four or five openings with a pay of minimum wage at seven twenty-five an hour.
Make a motion to post it.
We've got some more discussion on it, but we do need a motion to go ahead and.
Make a motion to post it, and when the behemoth lies down there.
Second?
Twenty-five.
Darren, second.
All in favor?
Everybody? All right. On, uh, opening the pool?
Now, we're going to hire it all. Last year, Shannon, what would she do down there? I forgot. We created some, another position. She's working it again? Yeah, she's working it out. But what I would say is that position gonna be about a while. Forgot what we. Characterized it? Yeah, that's right. Guess that'll be one of them more. We'll do that again. Spencer discussing.
Do you think it helped? I mean, I don't know.
Far as key of control and the reason we done it?
It may have helped, you know? I don't know. It may have.
Or did you have more complaints or less?
She had some issues with some parents too, so I don't know.
I mean, I'm, I'm open to hiring one.
That's just something that y'all have to make a decision on.
I want him to handle the pool. If we're gonna pay him to be down there. You know, take, take care of it. Y'all said she did, and, you know.
If a parent's just got a problem with it, we'll ban them from going to the pool.
She was getting.
I may want to take care of that.
Some complaints by parents, she might have been doing, yeah.
Well, that's what I was thinking. That's what I was.
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, if, if y'all want to, uh, post that job again.
I think we need to. We can look at who puts in for it, anyway.
Cause they, they can take care of that if somebody's out, filling in. Like, like you said, owe me that, they take care of it.
Take care of the money while they're watching the kids. It's a wonder.
And just, you have a, a lot of times they're younger and, uh, it helps to have an adult down there overseeing.
Ten for seven, twenty-five an hour as well, is that right?
We will take applications until...
Haven't looked at my team, I guess.
Yes, that's what I wanted to say. We need to put up a paper for all of them. Yeah, I see what I'm watching. We'll take applications until. Uh, we'll take applications until May tenth. That will give them, we talked about opening the pool on June first, which is Saturday. So any of them that are not certified, that'll give them. Three, four weeks to go through their certification. But hopefully, some of them that worked last year that are certified, they'll reapply.
Derek, something else with that pool, same way, last year, we had to get somebody to pre-open it, so to speak.
We we did, we had Jamie.
Yeah.
Sweeney go down there and.
So, you know, get it ready.
And we may, I haven't been down there, but we may have to do something again. Summertime is pretty tough on our city guys itself, in between mowing and. Keeping their old dispatch and everything they have to do, but we'll we'll look at it and. Determine if we need another outside party to get it going. And just looking at the map, school starts back.
Is it the egg? Egg doubling?
It's August eighth.
It's early this year.
So. We're talking about closing August the third would be, or the fourth would be that Sunday, or we go open it. We need to discuss how many days we want to open it. We're gonna do seven days a week, six days a week.
I'll go with you last year.
The seven, and they had good crowds most of the time.
The time. Um. Nothing, I mean, you have, here here'll have a little.
I mean, I didn't have anybody missing or nothing, you know, covered everything good, but you hoping that one?
She took care of that.
It wasn't good. So y'all can start out seven days a week, and if one day we're way off, then the rest of them, you know, we'll look at cutting back. Yeah.
It's just gonna depend on how many lifeguards we get, and it's gonna be registered, I mean, it's gonna have to cut.
Twenty-five. Parties. Six to eight.
Yes, party six to eight. And we've been charging a hundred dollars for two hours, do y'all wanna continue that?
That's fifty to the ten on, and then the.
Twenty-five to each one.
And who rests the, uh, pool, they pay the lifeguard themselves. We have two lifeguards who are parties, and like twenty-five each.
Yeah, that's good, 'cause that's what comes out, like, she sets up in two, it'll be like twelve fifty, I've got a little bonus, so seven twenty-five.
Yeah, and make a little more.
Yeah, put them out good, I say, as soon as they're. Or I'm good with it, everybody else is, I don't.
Oh, yeah. That's pretty neat.
The way it was set up, as I come out, I may break even anyway, or a little bit of aid. I don't know, folks would, long wait going in a hole.
Just a little bit ahead, we wouldn't, we didn't go in the hole.
Yeah.
Now, the year before, they spent too much on food because they tried to cook chicken fingers and things like that, I just don't think that's necessary.
It's not. And I'd say, just, you're gonna do that still, huh? Yeah. Pop sick, and then we done.
Yeah.
Done it, pop sick with candy bars and chips, and that should be enough.
All right, so we need a motion to post job openings for lifeguards and a supervisor.
Do we not do that?
Most.
We we did for the lifeguards, but I don't know.
We added supervisor, okay.
Minimum wage and, uh, if you go ahead and add for the rate to stay the same, too, on pool rental, just put it all in one sentence.
Yeah.
What she said, when the parties are in it. Saying to hire the help and to pay to stay this way.
Yeah, we'll continue the same practice regardless, on pool parties and, uh, time.
Okay.
One to five, seven days a week.
And adjust accordingly, like you said.
Okay.
Any slack.
Pool parties will be six to eight. All right, we had a motion and a second for the lifeguards, and a motion and a second for the supervisor.
My late motion.
Kevin.
Second.
Derek, seconds. All in favor?
Everybody.
All right. Item number three, update on Denson building and picking his vehicles.
Yeah.
Um. Mister Denson. And his son, and I guess it was contractor, came up here. One day last week, and, uh. Took pictures and they were getting measurements and all that, and he said they are going to. Put a new roof on it, put new windows and doors, and, uh, get everything fixed up, and he was gonna rent it out.
Did you tell him he still had, had the work started within our timeframe? How much time does he got left now? About thirty days left?
Oh, it's less, it's probably more like two weeks.
Does it, does he know that they get to be some hammering and nailing going on?
Well, he he got the weather, I mean, you know, so.
Because, you know, last time he kind of just, well, we wasn't in here, you were, but, you know, he put two or three shingles up there and he left it out, he never came back, but.
Yeah, well, uh, I think he, there gotta be a timeframe there, and, uh, we already did. Necessarily work on all for it, I think we just need to follow through on it.
Yeah.
Next meeting, we'll know it should be past the two-week point.
Right.
And whatever we, the next steps at least be taken, I think we need to do it. That's my personal opinion.
Right.
Whatever, we've done our due diligence.
Yeah.
It's up to him.
Right.
And we've seen the track record in the past, so let's just stick to our guns, and what we supposed to do, and it's up to him. That that's my.
Well, that's, I'm only.
I would suggest that the next meeting, y'all, um, make a motion to go forward with any legal action we need to take.
You know, hopefully, between now and then, he'll be working.
Yeah, I hope he's substantially along the way.
Yes, sir. I mean. He didn't say nothing about when he was gonna start the work, he was talking about.
No, uh, I mean, he he knew he got the letter, what the letter stated, so.
The thing about it is, that was second one we've seen him, wasn't it?
It was.
I mean, this administration.
Yes.
So, you know, he's drug.
It was the second one we've seen him.
Yeah, so I feel like he's got ample time, if he'd answered earlier, let's just.
Keep our eyes dotted, teeth crossed, and do what we're supposed to do, and let the system work, and see what happens.
Yeah.
I don't know.
That's it.
Okay, um.
What about?
Steve, he says, I, all of that stuff will be moved and gone before Friday. So, you know, if if it ain't. Yeah. We'll move on to. What we gotta do, but, you know, I explained to him, we've got neighbor day coming up, and. We would appreciate if he would.
Yeah.
Work with us on this.
Has he said anybody's plans, or what do you guys wanna do with, I mean. He's got the the big building, I mean, is it his land, or?
That land he's own is his land.
It's that strip between the building and the main road.
He bought the old shop, right?
Okay.
Building, land.
Well, I think he told you, I mean, his word.
Well, I'm taking him at his word.
Yeah, he said, I think he told you that he'd have it moved, but.
So.
See if he's manned his word.
Yeah, come Friday, we'll, we'll know.
Yep.
At that point, we'll. We'll move from there. All right. Item number four, discer- discuss curbside pickup. At Mack and Cave Frederick's old place and the neighbors across the street.
Well, yeah, and curbside pickup, we know it.
They, somebody came in and piled everything out right away. We we can't pick up everything, I mean. We can get the brush and wood. There there's a lot in there that we can't pick up, that we can't help them with.
Or are we gonna have to sift through it, or is it separated? If we're gonna have to sift through it, I say.
Sifting through.
I say, send them a letter, just like we did everybody else, and let that ball roll the way it rolls, because we ain't gonna go over and dig through it and separate it, and. Now, if it's, like you said, if it's within our legal limits, what we do for anybody else, we do what we can, leave the rest for us picking through or getting something in there that we can, you know.
Um.
I'm a hundred percent for doing anything for them that we can do for anybody else, and not just.
Absolutely, I mean, we we want it cleaned up.
Right, but we we're not.
Probably more than anybody.
Yeah, we're not a clean up business, so, but, I mean, if it's legal, you know, if it's what we do for anybody else, I'm all for it. And understand, you know, that cave situation, good people.
They they don't want it anymore, somebody bought it.
Did they?
Yeah.
What's on there?
So what if, oh. Like this new track.
Backhoe.
Backhoe, it's got a clog on it.
Mm-hmm.
So what if we went by and just picked it, like what Eugene said, whatever we do for anybody else, don't sift through it, it's whatever's there to get it. And then they'll have to move the rest of it, so I'm like.
Yeah, if they separate it, we can pick it up like we would normally pick it up.
You have to help my mom, and I'm all for that, if I'm separated out, but we 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 pick up for anybody else, I'm gonna get in the rest, I'll be responsible for, and I have to have a call in a.
Yeah.
Lot of time over.
Well, you say there's things in there that's, that won't go in the dump?
Yeah. Yeah, there's some stuff in there that don't want it.
Of course, our brush, we burned it, though, and it probably doesn't burn it, and all of this, but, yeah. We not moving left.
I mean, it it ain't, we won't take it, or we don't want it to land, Phil.
Yeah, I know, you're gonna get fined, you can put it in there, too, for shut down.
And we got a dump, we got a dump truck, we can put that in if we need to.
We got three, two for.
I, we get that, with that knuckle bag on there, you just go over and get what we can get, and the rest of it, at that point, is there, that day, period. You won't have to get in there, sift, let it just.
Yeah.
Run and cause that, get what you got, that weekend, actually, has.
Yeah.
But we need to do something, I mean, it's, I I it has been a work for quite a while.
Really?
Oh, yeah, no, about two, three years, I guess.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, we were doing some of that later, then, it's down there.
I think they probably got.
One of the brands, but now the others, they, it just has.
Yeah, they've just cleaned it out.
They've cleaned it out and tried to, like you said, sew it, I think.
Yeah.
And those people may clean that part up, I don't know, they know where, well, when they just have to start themselves.
My son, we might have to get our county man to ride around and find people for making dumps on the side of the road, that sound like a dump, well, you can get old Barney Allen. It's that horn arrested, you know, it's you, ain't that what he does, Mr. Glenn?
That's it. You got pull with him.
Yeah, you sure.
All right, Eugene's going to call the county.
Yeah, we want to mess like that.
So, yeah, that's later.
Don't put that in there, Mr. Glenn.
If we do come by and pick it up, you know, like, if if somebody in the neighborhood or whatever sees us come by and pick it up, you know, we have to explain that. We just, the only thing we can pick up is what we can handle at the dump, we can't take anything else at A M or somebody else and get on.
What county do you brush and what else, that's it, you can't take cash in mattresses.
Wood, um.
Didn't we have an issue with some mattresses going down there right after we got in here, or? Or did we, with our green man?
Also, Steve told me we can take a mattress. I'm not totally sure about that, but we have a sign down there that lets them know what we can take.
You want to take the tree guys? I'm talking about for our guys picking up.
Oh, they know, yeah, they know. They know what we can take, you want to take.
I made a motion to haul on and what we're allowed to haul. Don't burn places, the rest is our responsibility. So we can move on with that issue.
Yeah, I was thinking, that's the motion.
Eugene made a motion to clean up what we can over there.
Oh, what we can haul.
All in favor?
Uh.
Everybody. All right, we'll skip number five a minute, your gravel grade, uh. Jimmy Abels. One 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 nine Engle Street. Have we got them any gravel, Carla, do you know?
I don't, I don't like that kind of.
It's been on the list, too. So we can't, we can't haul any gravel right now with the backhoe.
Right.
Yeah, yeah. Um, William Gerald has been on it for a little bit, Ray Hudson. Peter Latrell.
Engle Street, that's the one with my old runner. Where do they have?
Yeah, that's for the mowers.
To make a motion for, you know.
Yeah, I make.
Might come, get some, get some dollars, you know.
Second.
You know, the rest, we get it coming.
Kevin, all in favor?
That would be nice.
If they call in, Carl, just have Maggie tell them soon as we get the backhoe in.
Got Ted a little difficult to stand. Or Peter for that.
Item number five, uh, discuss neighbor day. Jessica, you got anything good to add?
Oh, we got some good vendors coming, I'm pretty excited. Uh, that safety pledge is coming, he came today and he kinda looked at his spot, he's gonna be set up selling fresh, he's headed out tonight to get, uh, shrimp and crawfish, he's gonna have it ready to buy and freeze and ready to eat. Um, I went to Muscle Shoals flea market this weekend, we've got several that's gonna, uh, we've got a couple, the grilled cheese truck is coming, so I know Carla said that we was kinda lacking on our food, so. I got the, they're coming, um.
It isn't.
Got a couple boutiques that are coming, I think we're gonna do really good as far as vendors, um, a few of them were kinda nervous about paying last week, but. I just looked yesterday on the weather last night, and it's gonna be pretty this weekend.
So you're hoping right now?
Yeah, so, I think they'll start sending in there.
Yeah, I think it's supposed to be Thursday, then move out.
Yeah, Thursday night into early Friday, and then by lunch, it's supposed to be gone, and pretty and eighty degrees on Saturday.
I gotta speak to that.
Also, we have a a Mexican vendor, it's gonna be, I don't know, it's just tacos or what, she's gonna have some Mexican. Food and Rescue Squad is doing grilled hamburgers and hot dogs.
About the entertainment, you get all that filled up? I didn't realize it, but Mike Federick was telling me that there was a bunch more, of course, you can't flank on there, somebody has a festival every weekend.
Oh, yeah, there's a lot.
He said there was a bunch that's weekend.
There is, that's why we were having a time.
Well, I mean, we can just make it available, if they come, they come, and, you know, the tractor pull and the car show.
Cause I lost some of their.
Well, the tractor pulls off.
Yeah, that way.
The man's sick, he can't come.
Okay, well, well, still the car show and some entertainment.
But, um, we've got a lot of entertainment, but it was hard finding vendors that had come before because they went somewhere else.
Right.
Because last year, we had it at a different weekend.
Yeah.
Nashville was this weekend, Nashville flea market, so we're big.
Nashville.
Well, they something that come in. This is something like Pete's Festival, I don't, I don't kinda, they come three or four.
Music Festival, Ayuka's having their big one, uh, Jay Birds is having theirs, that's gonna be everything angry, so there's a lot of stuff going on this weekend, so.
No, basically, it's just four vendors that can come and for the people that wanna get out and fellowship, so.
And I think.
I mean.
I think it would be, I mean, I think it's gonna be good. Gonna be good, yeah, we've got a good.
We've got a good variety, uh, we have on, uh, Friday night, it's gonna start out with, uh, Dustin Busby, um. He is, um, someone that I just found out, do you know him?
Yeah, he's, uh, he's kind of Cody Culver, you know Cody and Lindsay, he's kind of them because he's kinda goes all the way to the country, Southern rock, so, you know, it's, it's just him, but. He's pretty good.
But he is, um, wanting to come for free, so we'll let him play first. Um, Josh Armstrong, uh, he is the husband of Hodges City Clerk. And then firstborn sons and Creek. And also Creek is Steve Loveless, you know, Steve Linda Powell's husband. Um, they do sound and everything as well and they're gonna play Friday night and Saturday. And do all the sound and they said eight hundred dollars is what they would take, which is, that's good.
Really?
To get all the.
They're gonna set up the stage and anybody else, like Kenny was doing, they're gonna take care of all of that. Sounds like a winner to me, that last one thing left, we're gonna deal with, pull the trailer up there and let them have it.
And, um.
He's local, there are people, we're paying people, that's local people to do it, that's great.
Yeah, keeping the money at home.
Um, and Saturday, uh, my son was gonna try to sing National Anthem, but the baseball team was gonna be going to Tuscaloosa, I think, so he's not gonna do it. So, I have asked Courtney McKinney to do it and she said if her voice is okay, she will. Um, do you have anyone in mind to ask for the opening prayer? I have not asked, but a lot of times we've, we've used several.
Time for any of the local.
Okay, I'll just get in touch with one of them.
Yeah.
Uh, we have, uh, Creek again, it's gonna play that morning and of course, I've told y'all about Gary Robel, he's the Southern gentleman in, involved, uh. With Southern gentleman, he's wrote the book about, uh, Sonny James and he will be at ten o'clock. And I think Darrell has got with Barney about. Doing like a roundtable discussion with him about Sonny James and the book and. And I think that would be neat, we really make, need to make him feel welcome.
Right. Well, we could if we can get loaded, just set that radio a little further, wouldn't it, do that live, broadcast.
Yes, that would be good.
Had to wait until by eight. Feed a table, sit up, broadcast that thing live.
Talk to them more, see if they can.
It might not have been a good idea, you know.
I mean, he, he will and Tony or.
They just wanna know what the others.
They'll help out.
And we have Crossing Dixie, uh, they're an all-girl band and, uh, these girls are from Hamilton and Joey Stoltz is daughter of one.
Mm-hmm, they're pretty good.
And of course, Joseph Baldwin. Uh, Handshake Promise and he is, uh, Richard Kitchens from Sports Gallery. And then Austin Lewis, he's a police officer in Bear Creek and he does music, he's pretty good. And that's our entertainment.
When is Richard, the Handshake Promise?
They're playing Saturday at one o'clock.
We've been trying to get Richard Handshake Promise here a long time, but finally worked out.
Of course, the car show is a go, um. Garden Ray has got all that taken care of, we have the trophies and we have T-shirts for sale, uh, they're ten dollars. Up to an extra large and then the larger sizes are twelve dollars. They're for sale now, they will be through Saturday. It's about a guy that we are gonna get together maybe tomorrow and try to make sure we've got everything listed and. We've gotta get our numbers walked off on the road.
Cause I think, however, if I were still like it was too, so if I were a real bit by goods, that'll be.
Hopefully, we.
I saw another Sees Fire Band that was still out there, so look another day when it come through, so all we'll have to do is just flip it on, maybe hook it to the box.
Fire bands are good.
Yeah, and you know, you.
Do you know where the, uh, seafood guy wants to be?
Um, I told him, um, I called Carla today and we thought right there in front of the school buses was, cause he's gonna have to have water, so right there would probably be.
Water and power.
Yeah.
Okay.
Is that the guy from Hamilton?
Yes.
Yeah, I just got some food.
Oh, sure.
And, uh. There's some others that will have to have some water and power.
People will have to have water. Okay.
And the, um. The folks that have the inflatables that had talked to you.
She goes on that, where are you?
Since we're not having, um, the tractor or lumber pull, I told them they might wanna go in that area down there. If they can make it work in a flatter area closer to you and not be so far off the road, so we'll look at that.
They're pretty, they're pretty flexible, she is wanting something on it, even she said the pavement would be fine, just not something that's gonna be there.
Now, we've had them set up on the asphalt before on the, a road and, and they've done good and it should not be a, a flatter surface if she did that.
Yeah, she's pretty flexible.
Okay.
Which now Brad Holland, you know him, he'll bring in. I don't know, five or six different ones and. He'll have a tent and lemonade and.
Funnel cakes.
Funnel cakes and all kinda stuff, that he comes in from Atlanta.
And he usually does the hormones and she said she might do like a five inch jump for dollars.
I'm gonna get my dad.
Alright.
And the next thing, we have got to have door prices.
Yeah.
I got you too.
Do what?
I got you too right here.
Doesn't it work?
Yeah, that's what's in the bowl.
Uh, if y'all know anybody that'll be needing money or anybody, any price at all, um, is door price.
I've got some Oliver from the Flea Market, he sent, they're twenty or twenty-five dollar gift cards for the same house up there, he sent five or six of them.
Great. Great, we have, um. Applied for. An R C and D grant for two thousand dollars and I think that looks good. Um, Alabama Power, True Homes, um, V F, which is now called Contour. Dr. Mara, Pippin's Trust, Page Vic, Hackenberg Market, Crimson Truck Sales and Vince Hughes. We have either got the money or they have pledged to give us money for donations for, for being sponsors and that helps to pay for our entertainment.
We'll really work it this week too to keep adding.
But we need the donation, or the door prize donations is what we need badly.
Alright. Anything else? There? Eugene?
Yeah.
Kevin?
I have the staff shirts in there, but I don't have them pulled out, if y'all wanna come by Friday and get yours or whatever.
I'm making a lady drive and get one for Tracy, cause I know last year she wore a prior too and that, I think that sold a bunch of them, everybody seen them, I said, oh, where'd you get that?
We actually need to take a couple around town and, and put them out and let people see them and make that idea.
Y'all gonna be able to be here Friday night and Saturday?
It'll, it'll be, it'll be six, I know before I get here, we'll do inventory, we used to do it Friday and Saturday, so what we're trying to do is do it all Friday. And then that way I can be up here Saturday morning too, and I may have to go back down there Saturday morning and try and not do that. Okay. Be right here, darling.
I don't remember if I've seen it.
I don't think I've done it, I've done it, but I don't know. I'm gonna be, but I'll get in it back in January, but I don't know, the company, I don't know if they're what they're doing, so I don't know. Anyway, I'm leaving tomorrow Wednesday more fishing, I might be back by Friday. I don't know. But, uh, Mr. Baum will sit in, but I'd be more glad to pull my weight this year.
Don't Darrell sit down?
Exactly. You didn't lay that here, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah, do miss.
I'll never do miss.
Show up.
Yeah. Cause a power is always my biggest issue, getting that.
It is.
So, we, I'm gonna ask you about that, when we end up here? Well, I told you. Four tomorrow. Grub called and said he could do three thousand. And we're gonna do a hundred a month, I told him we can do that now, I said, we will allow you three thousand and you pay it off in four or six months. And then whenever everything back to really be fine. Yeah, I said. Bill, bill. So, if he don't hurry to get it here, probably gonna spend that money.
Yeah.
We do the challenge, yeah, or I will, we do that and we say, well, we, we've agreed, we would take three. Boy, this gets out of hand and then we pay it off within six months, give you time, you know, give the other two. But we, we don't go ahead and get it. Alright, need a motion to adjourn?
Yep.
Eugene, second.
Motion.
Second. Dan. All in favor? Everybody.